It's 7:00 PM, so we will get started with our Board of Selectmen budget deliberations. Just a couple of comments that I wanted to make upfront before we get started. You know, Kate has done a great job of giving to us a very well-thought-out budget with a few expansions of town service. Modest, in my opinion, quite frankly, and some of those have been long planned, like the finishing the civilian dispatch plan. So one of the things that we have to do as a board is to determine if that's our objective, is if our objective is to continue the level of service that we currently provide to our town residents with some modest enhancements this year. And if the answer to that is yes, then we know that that comes at a cost, right? And that's always the balance, is to make sure that we're providing the services and the amenities that our taxpayers have come to expect, but to balance that against the burden of increasing taxes. I haven't had a chance to do the analysis yet, but one thing on my mind, just to always keep us kind of in check, is to go back in history by 10 or 20 years and look at tax increases on, call it an average home price over those years, look at value increases, and then project out going forward 10 or 20 years. To, you know, to always remind us that while we see the nuts and bolts of the Board of Selectmen budget and how it aggregates to a certain increase every year, being mindful that, you know, the taxpayer, we don't want to overburden the taxpayers, especially in difficult years. So I'd really love to hear from each of you about your thoughts in that regard, you know, if it's a year to be status quo, if you're looking for service enhancements, if you think we need to be mindful and have some more difficult conversations about eliminating certain services that we provide. It's always, it's always an uncomfortable but necessary discussion that we should have each and every year, so that really guides the work that we do from this night going forward. So I don't know if anybody has any comments they'd like to offer at this time, you can certainly offer them along the way, but I do like to get a read on where you guys are about service delivery. Anybody want to offer up some comments upfront?
I think we think it's a good budget.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Jamie, I have thoughts, but I think as we go through the different, like all RCs, I'm happy to, I have a lot of thoughts in both directions, but thank you very much to you and to Kate and to all the department heads for all the work that has gone into this point. I think we're in a good, definitely in a great starting place, but I appreciate your comments, Jamie, to be cognizant of delivery of services and the tax burden.
Yeah, for sure, and I too want to thank Jen and Kate and our department heads. You know, I've been looking at the town budget for a long time, and I'm always very impressed by how much we do with a fairly lean budget. You know, we don't, we're not really wild spenders, but having said that, each and every expenditure that we have to decide, you know, we have to weigh carefully against knowing that that's going to cause a burden on our taxpayers. So I guess we'll get started. I know we had a number of questions that were outstanding, and I have a shortlist, probably not an exhaustive list. So I will, I will get started, and please, board members, if you've taken notes on things that we wanted some follow-up on, just please chime in. One of the first open questions was, we questioned the food expense for elections. And, you know, if you don't have any information, Kate will just leave it on the list, but I want to make sure we get all of our questions answered.
Right, so I'm going to maybe start with, I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so we know we have some adjustments, and that was one of the ones on our list. So we can cut $1,100 out of the elections food budget.
We like when that happens. Okay, and the next is probably on this list too, we questioned the town clerk revenues given current housing activity.
Right, so I'm not going to recommend an increase to that. I went back, what you're seeing here, the top part of the screen, went back to 2011 and took the budget versus actual for the town clerk's revenue. And this is a graph showing, the blue is the budget, the orangey one is the actual. And averaged it over the 11 years, we're averaging about $1,650,000 going back all those years. And you can see it stays pretty steady from about 1.4, the high was 1.8. If this year continues at the trends it's at, yes, it's going to be higher. But we also, Jen went and took a look at the monthly numbers for the last three fiscal years. And what you see is we're starting to drop already, we've had some very high numbers, but January is a significant drop. And I don't, can you see that number? I'm not sure if you can see how big it is, but we went from 277,000 revenue in December to 114 in January. And it's typical for it to drop in January, but that's a much larger drop than we normally see. And if you look further, we do tend to continue to drop in February, pick back up again, but it stays pretty stable in the 120, 100 to 120,000 dollar range, and it gets back higher in June. So, you know, we're already starting to see, like I said, the drop-off. We didn't feel an uptick was warranted. It's a risky, risky thing to do. If you bring it up higher, you know, I'd say we're probably on track to do at least 2 million this year, if not more, but if you go for that target next year and you fail to make it, if you come back in at what our average has been, that's a significant shortfall. So I think you should, any adjustment there should be very carefully thought out.
Board comments or questions on that? Thank you for this analysis, that's very helpful.
I would agree with Kate's conservatism on this one.
Okay.
Was this a proposed add in here? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to.
The question had come up when we reviewed the budget, could we increase that revenue item?
Okay.
And it was based on the fact that we're seeing increased activity in the housing market, so this is great analysis, thank you very much for that. Be sure to pass that along to the Board of Finance, because I know discussions about revenues really is in their wheelhouse. Next on my list was the Harbor Master justifying his expenditure requests.
I reached out to him, I sent him an email when that request was, when that question was raised, and did not receive a response. I resent the email this morning, have not received a response. My suggestion would be to go ahead and cut it.
Okay, well, we have, you know, we have 24 hours before our next deliberation, so I'll try and reach out to him as well.
Jamie, can we go through RC as we started? Is that possible? Like, kind of just to go?
We could do that, yes, but I'd like to go through what, you know, there's a whole list of questions that we wanted Kate and Jen to ask, or to answer for us.
Did we get those combined?
Well, they weren't distributed, but I certainly took notes on questions that we asked along the way. Jen and Kate, I believe, took notes on the questions that came up.
Yes.
So I'm happy to go through budget center by budget center, because we need to discuss them all anyway as we move along, but I'd love to follow through with the questions first, if that's okay. We were also going to revisit the building permit revenue estimates, Kate?
Right, I reached out to Pete Solheim, and he was reluctant to raise it. And I'd have to go back into my emails to see his specific reason. I can do that a little bit later if you want.
Okay, and were we going to make an adjustment in the human service part-time salary?
Yes, right here, it's minor, $846.
Okay.
Hey Kate?
Yep.
On the, on the building department permit revenue?
Yep.
Would you, for me, would you ask him how the permit revenue works for pools? Because my understanding is there are currently 19 pools that are waiting to be put in, so that will obviously won't happen until a little bit later in the spring, so I don't know when the permit revenue accrues for those, or how much it would be.
Well, the permit revenue comes in, you know, when you pick up your permit, when you pay for your permit. I'm gonna say that pools are not going to be a high-revenue item. Your real, your real money there is the new construction and the big renovations. But I will ask him about that.
Okay, thanks.
If anybody has, that was my shortlist of question notes that I took. If anyone else has any outstanding issues, if not, well, I'd like to ask Kate to run through the known adjustments that they made notes of. And then Kate, I'd like to, I would assume that we have to agree to these changes before they get input into the Open Gov program, is that correct? Or have you already made these adjustments?
I have not, Jen?
No, they haven't been entered yet, I wanted to have you guys review them and agree that we want to do these, and then we'll put them into Open Gov.
Okay. All right, so Kate, I'll turn to you to review these.
Okay, so on the, on the revenue side, we talked about the parking tickets in the town lots and reviewed the activity and made some assumptions about parking returning to more normal activity in January of 2022. So proposing an increase to the revenue item there, $14,000. We talked about building Parks and Rec. Pam told us about the increase in the past, cost of the passes, I think we have an error here, it's the beach parking permit, that's going to bring in 37,500 in additional revenue. On the expenditure side, fixing the error I'd made in the emergency management overtime, that's an add of 1,400. We're still waiting to hear whether or not Park and Rec can take on the mowing at the Jill Tower. $3,000, that's reversing my, I had intended to take it out, but ended up adding it by mistake, so that's a $3,000 cut. We told you this last night about reduction in workers' comp, medical insurance, just mentioned the human services part-time salary reduction. When we met with Parks and Rec, Pam told us we could cut $2,000 because they're not going to do walk-in passes. We can cut 24,632 out of the motor fuel budget because we bid that out, we do a statewide, a bid with a number of other communities in the state, and our rate is lower than, came in lower than what Ed had estimated when putting his budget together. We talked about reducing expenses for food for the election, and right now, we're estimating that we can reduce the food and related supplies in the senior center by $1,300, assuming that they will go back to in-person lunches in the fall. The other changes on this sheet are sewer and parking, and they're all related to the benefits.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about any of those changes? Yes, Krista?
On the revenue parking ticket, I'm sorry, what was it that you were budgeting to? One, could you send us that document? That would be helpful just to have.
Yes.
Then what were you, I have put down for revenue for parking an add, but what are your?
It was an add.
I'm sorry, how much?
$14,000.
Okay.
Does anyone have any concerns with adopting the adjustments that Kate just went through? They all seem reasonable to me. David? Do you have a question, David? Oh, we can't hear you.
David, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Just gonna ask if she could put them back up on the screen for a second?
Oh, sorry, sure. Hang on a second, let me. There you go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Are we okay to adopt? Okay, thumbs up? Okay, thank you. Krista, do you have questions?
I'm sorry, I was, did that document have the cutting of the lawn in there, or I can't remember?
We don't have, I reached out to Parks and Rec, I don't have a response back from them yet on whether or not they can take that on.
Okay, all right, so that's still TBD.
Yes.
As is the Harbor Master question. Yep. And Kate will send that document to everyone.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so let's go, I think, you know, Krista, you requested that we go cost center by cost center, so fair enough, right? I think that we should start, though, with capital. Because I think there's, you know, a lot of discussion will center around capital. Is everyone agreeable to that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
We have the cemetery cleanup in the commissions.
I support these. Sarah, is this enough to go with 10, when we had 15 in previous? Do they need 15?
We did not have 15 in the previous, the five was for town hall landscaping. We had 10 last year.
Okay, I thought we had also done a transfer, and we had, okay. Is the grant additive to this, Kate? The $4,000 grant?
The grant is in addition to this.
Okay, so.
Okay, so as long as it's enough. Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I would say that we don't have a lot of solid history on what is enough for the cemeteries, because the diligence with the cleanup ebbs and flows depending on the volunteers. So, you know, there's, you know, some years, it costs a lot because there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. Okay, you know, and I just want to encourage board members to jump right in on this, so that, because we have a lot to go through tonight, so if you have a question, just raise your hand or flag it, so we can move quickly through these areas.
I'm good to go in alphabetical order here, just because it's easier.
Sure.
Darien Fire, they had asked for an air bottle filling station, and I sent you out the answers to the questions we had on that about the useful life. It is 20, 20 years, each, currently each has their own, Darien's is no longer operable, but the other two departments do have them.
Questions or concerns on these two items?
No.
No. Good, thank you.
The drone, it's coming up.
I was not able to get a response to the questions you all had about the drone.
Okay.
Okay, I was gonna put that in as a possible cut, or as, better understand, can we spread out the utility on that?
Yeah, I concur with that, putting that on a possible cut list, while we wait more information on who else might be able to use it and for what, and what trainings are required.
Yeah, so I had a question about the licenses.
Yep, I did ask that, so I'm waiting for the responses.
Thank you. Does anyone disagree with putting this on the cut list? No? Okay, great.
Okay. So here we're looking at the traffic preemption system. And I sent you some responses to the questions you had about its total of 34 intersections. We currently have 28 done, there are six that are not done, so they would be done when we, if we upgrade. They don't believe that it would be an issue. We do need state permission to do the signals on the state roads, but they don't foresee an issue with that. Just pointed out that, yes, we would have to maintain them if we put them in on state-owned intersections.
The question I had for Kate earlier today is if this is a, if we're buying a package for these 34 intersections, and what the likelihood is that all 34 could be installed within the next fiscal year, just don't know how we purchase it, and if it, if it's an expense that should be borne solely in the next fiscal year or spread over future years.
I think those are great, what is the life of these? So we're gonna be adding six and updating the remainder, what is the life of this? 10 to 15 years?
I think the only question would be whether you can have the two different systems operate at the same time. In other words, if you did, if you did half your intersections one year with the old system, kept the old system, you probably can't work it that way, can you?
No, so I asked that, I asked that question, and no, we can't break it up into pieces, it's a package deal, a package deal.
Okay.
That's what I would have thought. Okay.
Well, it's an, it's an important public safety issue, so I believe that we should move this forward.
So would this be 300 every 10 years, is that the idea? Or 300 and up?
Yes. Until something else in technology changes and.
But it's not, 300 doesn't, is all of it that continues to be replaced, it's not a license plus a maintenance?
No.
I wasn't, 300 is actually broken out, okay.
Concrete pad at the fire training grounds, I spoke to Ed Gentile about this, the question had been last night, could we include this in the bid when we do the concrete sidewalks? And he said, yes, we could do that, but you should be aware that the bid is about to go out right now. We wouldn't be able to include this in a budget or in a bid until the spring of 2022. And without knowing more about the project, Ed couldn't opine on whether or not there was potential to do better by including it in his bid than by bidding it as its own project.
I mean, I personally don't think it's a huge number, I'm just unsettled that we could do it for less if we put it as part of a project, and so that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, and we don't know. We don't know if we would, if it would be less.
Right, so that's why I struggle, is this the right time until we have that information?
Well, I don't think you would know until you bid it, until you bid it with the other concrete work. So it certainly would be to the town's benefit if it comes in less than 30,000. I think we should decide the project on the merits of the project, as well as the cost of the project, and then see if we can, you know, work under a bid to get it, get the price down ultimately.
I have no issue with the merits of the project at all.
Okay. Sarah? Kate, are they unable to do some of the trainings because of this current size of the existing pad?
That is not my understanding. My understanding is that the concrete would be better than where they, right now, they do have a concrete pad, but it's not big enough for all that they would like to do on it, so they, burning on pavement, which is not ideal.
Yeah, burning on asphalt.
So.
Yes.
We haven't done this typically, but there's no reason why we couldn't go for a field visit to certain items on our list that, you know, we want to have eyes on just to get a perspective. So I would be willing to set a time when we could go out there and take a look, and if there's other things that we want to take a look at too, we could do that. I know Board of Ed does that.
Field trip.
We don't need to look at everything, certainly, but there might be a few things we want to look at, so I'm gonna start making a list of those things.
Ed have a relationship with any of these people who might be bidding on the sidewalks, just to give them some information about this particular project to get a ballpark idea?
I'm sure he does, I think the thing is, we, what he expressed to me this morning was that he would need to know more about what the fire department was intending, you know, was there any reinforcement that had to go into the concrete? You know, they say 2,500 square feet, what are the actual dimensions? What's the thickness? You know, he didn't know enough about the project itself, so if we got more detail, he might be able to get some more information.
That's fair enough, so then, then taking that same sort of information, how, or why do we think it's going to cost 30,000 if we don't have that detailed information?
The fire department sought an estimate, they, if you see, they, they got the amount by talking to a contractor.
But if they had the information for their conversation, couldn't they just give that to Ed?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if that information's already been obtained for the original bid, just, again, I don't.
I think the challenge here, Krista, which you're really getting at, is that the fire training center and amenities up there. and amenities up there are managed by the fire commission and the fire departments. There's really no interaction with um, Public Works Department. But if you know, I'm I'm hearing you and I I'm agreeing that with something like this, perhaps there should be more of a collaboration between the town and the fire commission.
Right, if there was a spec sheet or an RFP the fire commission had just to give to Ed so he can.
I'll ask them for that.
You know, just share the information, even one bit, just the um, you know, could it if it got tacked on to a sidewalk, would it be five thousand? I don't know, just.
I'll ask them to to provide that. But the the point is, if we're going to include it in the bid, what you need to understand is and I don't think it should be an issue, but it wouldn't happen until the spring. And to me, the you know, for the fire fire commission having a cut versus having to wait until the spring. You know, I'll take waiting till the spring.
And you can refer to this this budget, we would just we're just trying to, I'm just trying to fine tune a number. Um, still, it would still be for this current budget.
Krista, would you prefer that we hold off in a year till we find out more?
No, I'm comfortable if the work Kate had said would still occur in the spring and the spring, I should say of twenty two. It would still be this budget cycle, which we're discussing. So, no, I don't think we need to put it be into the next fiscal year, no. Um, I just want to know is thirty thousand dollars the right number? Or the best number, I should say.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the other item here. Is the vehicle replacement program.
So uh, this afternoon or early this evening, I received some uh, great feedback from Jack Davis. And I see that Jack is on our call and I would encourage him if he can to um, can can he be unmuted so that he can talk to us about his thoughts? I think they're valuable.
Find him. He's unmuted.
Hi, oh. First of all, let me just start with um, many of the members in F and B believe that the fire engines should be bonded at this time. Um, I also, from doing some quick analysis, um, and Kate and Jen can correct me if I'm wrong. But in conversation with Bob Bush, the way we purchase these fire engines are, when we put in the order, we put down twenty five percent. And then when it's delivered eighteen to twenty four months later, we pay the remaining seventy five. So. I don't believe that that payment method has been added to the accruals in trying to figure out what we need if we're gonna continue the accrual method. But in just doing a very simplistic analysis. The average cost of our fire engines are about a million dollars. There are now fourteen um, units to be purchased because one was um, no longer qualifying. That comes out to fourteen million dollars, which says that the average that we would have is someplace in the neighborhood. So we have fourteen million, and if I was to divide that by twenty year life, if we were bonding, that comes to seven hundred thousand. And quite honestly, based upon the purchase schedule, I don't think we'd even hit that seven hundred thousand for another ten to fifteen years. I think that um, from what I understand in doing research, the original accruals were started in the mid nineties when interest rates were extremely high. And times have changed. And I think adding eight hundred thousand plus is um, not not healthy to the town's budget. I also believe that what we should be funding there should never be a hundred percent of the vehicles because it just doesn't make corporate finance sense. We should be at some other percentage, and I don't know what that percentage is because I haven't played with it. But this is something that I think that we should have a strong conversation on of whether or not, you know, we should not, you know, we shouldn't consider bonding these and help the cash flow to the town. Help reducing the taxes to our taxpayers. And still accomplishing what the goal is, is that when we need to get a fire engine, we get it and I'm sure that, and you know, Kate and Jen can always correct me on my accounting. But we could always pay the initial two hundred and fifty. And then when we pay the other thing, then repay back to the general funder or something because we can run some deficits here. So those are just our preliminary thoughts. We want to do some additional analysis, but um, I just throw that out there because F and B thinks that this is a really big number and that there are other solutions, which Jamie and um, Kate have mentioned. So those are just our thoughts on it, very simplistic and very quickly.
Thank you, Jack. You know, certainly.
You're welcome, I'm reading myself again.
The big policy uh, decision for the Board of Finance would be whether they're willing to bond at which point then we could budget for the down payment and debt service. You know, going forward. So I don't know, Jen, if you have any comments at this point or if we just wait till talk to the Board of Finance.
Uh, my only comment would be, I I would say we would bond the whole purchase, not um, not pay the down payment cash. Because we'd be authorizing bonding for the purchase of the truck. So we should author, if we were to bond, we should have bond for the full amount.
I just want to say, I I agree that this is a this expenditure really is a calls for being bonded. It's regular, it's long term. And it's predictable in the sense that you know you're gonna have to replace things over time. I did this inside and and concrete sidewalks are obviously, to me, a bonding issue.
I'd I'd actually like to see um, if it's possible to get this uh, history of of the of vehicles that have already been replaced and and the life of those vehicles at replacement. Um, so that we can try and make a case for bonding of the fire apparatus. Is that doable, Jen? Do we have that data?
Uh.
We, you know, Jen, we might be able to look in the fixed asset records.
We can see what we have.
Okay.
The only thing I would say, you know, that needs to be a part of this discussion is who makes the decisions on what and when to replace, what level of um, of apparatus, what the right amount is for the town. And it I think, you know, I expressed this last night, I think we we need to begin looking at this more about the town as a whole. And stop looking at silos.
Is that part of that? What you're thinking, would that be part of the or is this gonna be completely separate from emergency management consulting?
That is part of that. Yeah, I think that that is a very big part of that.
Okay, good.
Kate, as part of that, will they evaluate other services that could be done on a townwide consolidated basis?
I'm not sure.
Meaning other 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 fire related things, like some of the purchases, like every now, every house purchases.
Oh, yeah.
Independently, it's like, what what items could we purchase as a town at the fire commission level and distribute to each of the houses as opposed to each house buying independently?
I I think that's.
That's a great idea, thanks. Uh, I I would just pitch in one other thing. The the balances in this fund over time are right now unfortunately earning basically nothing. So uh, you know, that it's not, it's not like the old days where you actually could at least earn some interest back on them.
Okay.
So I don't know how that translates, you know, what we've just discussed, how that translates into our decisions about reserving this year for fire apparatus.
So. You could force the conversation by making a cut. Or you could just as part of your delivery message to the Board of Finance. Urge them to consider it.
Okay. I feel like we did that last year. But we could, we could certainly try again, but I'd love to, you know, I'll take advisement from my board members on how to proceed with that.
Second try is always better.
Okay. So are you recommending that we we cut the reserve again this year? Or or take a message to the Board of Finance that we supported it, but want them to to review?
We want them to review it seriously.
Okay.
The message apparently didn't get through last year. We want them to, I I mean, this is a logical, logical bonding issue.
Okay, I think we have members of the Board of Finance who are on the call tonight, so hopefully they're hearing this discussion. Sarah, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I would agree, I just, these are huge dollars. These are just huge dollars for the town that really affect our budget, you know, tremendously every year and will affect our operating as we go forward. And it would be prudent to have that discussion about bonding.
Well, again, and I I for anybody that's listening from the fire departments, I want them to understand that our 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 goal is not to not fund this apparatus. We want to purchase the apparatus that we need, we just need to figure out the smartest financial plan to do so.
Exactly.
Uh, I just for the for the record, I just reiterate, I'm on board with the bonding concept as well. And I don't recall Jack mentioning this, but um, at the point that that decision is made, there's a substantial amount of funds sitting in the account currently, which could reserve revert to the general fund, which would be beneficial overall to the town as well.
Well, it couldn't exactly revert to the general fund, but it could revert to the um, fund balance for the reserve fund.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, the accounting stuff, it goes back to capital contingency, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Can we move forward? Next department? Great, thanks.
Next department is the fire marshal. Uh, he was looking for purchase of another vehicle um, to be used some radio replacement and um, purchase of a vehicle to be used for the um, part-time inspectors. So the question had been asked about on the the vehicle, what about the police vehicles that we anticipate being handed down? And um, I sent you the response this year that or that earlier today. We're anticipating two from the police department and usually we can be pretty sure that one is gonna be good enough to be used by another department. And that one is going to replace an older vehicle that the fire marshal has now for the part-time inspectors, the one that they have now for them. We are not sure that the other one will be um, usable. So. You know, I think. Could we ask them to continue going the way they're going? Scheduling so that we don't have competing uses for the the one vehicle that they have? Providing mileage reimbursement for the part-timers to use their personal vehicles, you know, I think that's a. I think that's a feasible alternative.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we go to that model and what does that look like financially? What's that impact?
Um, have not calculated that out. Um, I'm not sure. Not sure we'll have a reasonable basis.
How long would it take it? How how long would it take us to get an assessment of the status of that vehicle? Because my understanding is right, we're replacing the police vehicles every three years. It may have a lot of miles on it, but it's been under warranty, it's been properly maintained. So it may have a lot of miles on it, but it's gotta be in significantly better condition than the two thousand and four vehicle that's currently available, no? And if it's gonna be used for part-time inspections around town, doesn't seem like it has to be. You know, certainly not a new vehicle anyway.
Um, you know, I could ask Ed if he can get Brian out there in the next day or so to um, you know, to see which ones the police are planning to trade in. You know, the other thing to consider was um, could we? Is there another trade down like? Do we have a full-time employee who's using a car that is not in great shape? Um, kind of do a. You know. A little domino effect there. But I can try and get you more information by tomorrow or your next meeting on Monday.
That'd be great, thanks.
I would like to know if this is right, part-time within the confines of Darian, could we look into a different model of reimbursement for mileage?
I'm not sure I know what you mean.
That in the case that this end of these individuals would use their personal vehicles and be reimbursed.
Right, so we typically, we pay the IRS rate. The only other way to do it, we to give them a stipend for their vehicle use.
And have we done that for other part-time staff with?
No.
Use.
The mileage reimbursement, yes, the stipend, no.
Wouldn't a stip or mileage be less than forty thousand? Dollars?
One would think, yes.
Is there any objection to going to that model then?
Well, you can see that they say that the use of was explored, but because of the tools and materials they need to carry on a database day basis, I expect there was some reluctance on the part of the um, employees to do that. They may also not have the size vehicle that um, you know, would allow for them to carry the tool.
Um, that that's actually a policy conversation that we could have at another time. You know, whether we want our town employees using their personal vehicles for town business and to be reimbursed for mileage and um, wear and tear, if you will. I think that's a good discussion for us to have. Um, the other discussion that I want to bring up here, just as a reminder, because we're really good about taking the police hand-me-downs and giving them to departments for their use, we never get to have the conversation about um, having a small fleet of electric vehicles for our inspectors. And I would love to have that conversation someday because there's uh, there's probably gonna be a a regional grant project that um, many municipalities are going to participate in. And I, you know, I'd I'd love to see that at some point. There's no reason why, you know, our health inspectors, for example, shouldn't be using an electric vehicle around town. Some, you know, some vehicles can't be that, the fire marshal's car, um, you know, can't be that, but um, anyway, I'd I'd love to see us put a charging station in and and have a, you know, a a very small fleet of uh, electric vehicles for our town staff to use. Any other questions about this car, hoping that maybe we can cut it, but we don't know yet? Okay.
So under general government, we have the um, setting aside funding for the revaluation that will be coming up. And the police server, so revaluation is, oh, that's a separate schedule. Um, we'll do the police server while I have it open. The current servers need to be, be replaced or at the end of their useful life. It is primarily for police. There will be some other, um, non-police software on there for Jeff Adams, but primarily it is a police server. I think the only question had been, does it belong in the IT capital budget or the police capital budget? The revaluation, have to do it every five years? And this is just setting aside funding so that when we get to the point that it's.
I feel like we talk about this every budget, but there's something about reserving for a professional service like that, that bothers me a little bit. And, you know, maybe you can talk me off, off the edge on that, Kate or Jen.
Well, you know, you're gonna spend, you're gonna spike your budget every five years if you don't reserve for it. That's the reason to do it.
And I think it's a little different than a typical professional services type purchase because we are statutorily required to do this every five years.
What is the cost every five years?
We're estimating $300,000.
Sorry, it's hard to see the numbers again.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Is it, is it reasonable to assume that that service will never go up in price over that long period of time?
I did ask you about that and he was very comfortable with leaving it at the 300,000 because they've been, um, it says on the refining their in-house appraisal tools. And they've been doing upgrades to their hardware and software, which has allowed them to keep the price stable and he expects it to continue to be so.
Yeah, it's come down. A number of years ago, we were more in the $500,000 range. And because of the amount of work that they're doing in-house, we've been able to get that cost down. And that was one of the reasons why we had increased one of the positions in that department from part-time to full-time a few years ago to help reduce this number.
Okay.
So Narotin is the apparatus bay floor. Radio replacements and SCBA replacements.
Sarah?
So to your earlier conversation about trying to look at all of our fire departments, emergency, emergency management, EMS and fire commission, kind of as a whole, there is so much redundant cost and it appears, I, I don't know if there's a way to reduce some of it by buying in, in bulk, and it sounds so trade, but there's so many radio replacements. There's so many radio maintenance. I mean, the maintenance itself is in our budget for operating. It's over $163,000. I mean, I don't know what the radio replacements are of him, but I'm just wondering, is there a way to kind of look at all of this? And, you know, to your point, Kate, about looking at all of this centrally?
I think we should.
We'd like to. That's what we're hoping that we can have that discussion in the context of that study.
Oh, and the consultant under Boris Luckman.
Yes.
Correct. Correct. I support this apparatus floor replacement because it's part of the project of connecting to natural gas, which is a cost savings for the town. Is this a, a candidate for bonding, Jen?
Based on the dollar amount, I wouldn't recommend it, but technically I suppose you could bond it. It does have a 20-plus useful life, but it is only $45,000.
So you don't look at things like in a bundle?
You can, um, but I think that it's, it can be a dangerous road to go down. If we say, well, if we can put together $2 million of bonding, that makes it worth it. And we start throwing in multiple smaller projects. I think my recommendation with the Board of Finance would be to develop a policy on the criteria that a project has to have in order to be considered for bonding. And I think it would be a combination of dollar amount as well as useful life and the nature of the project.
That's a good idea.
Jamie, if I, if I could, if I could just mention, the Board of Finance Capital Reserve Account currently stands at $769,000. And I don't remember for the exact number, but I want to say in my head, I have around 400 for the balances they've historically targeted. And there may be some additional monies tossed into that pool when Jen completes the final, uh, Capital Reserve Review portion in March. So there, you know, there may, if there are a couple of these sort of smaller type capital items, those might be perfect to ask the Board of Finance to use some of those reserves on.
Okay. Good point.
Okay. All right. I keep thinking I'm gonna sneeze. Next up would be Narotin Heights. And we had the LED changeover, um, which they explained, though they might be replacing that vehicle, they could move those light bulbs. Again, we have radios and chargers and SCBA units and the three thermal imaging cameras.
These expenses look fine. The things that, that you cut, Kate, I support the idea that the Board of Selectmen has a policy conversation about our willingness to invest in physical plant. You know, I know that we're, we're likely to approve the concrete floor at the Narotin Fire Department. So we do need some consistency of policy.
Yes, agreed.
Anyone have questions or comments here? No? Okay.
Parks and Recreation. So we have the Weed Beach Tennis Court repainting that they've been asking for, for a number of years and we've been putting it off. The Cherry Lawn gazebo roof, dredging the small pond at Tilly and repaving the main path. And the lawn mower, and then tree replacement at Tilly.
Krista?
I was gonna put in a conversation for a suggested add of 250 for the tennis courts. I'm concerned that we're taking one court away at Weed Beach for the pickleball, which is wonderful. Leaving three courts.
That hasn't happened yet.
And that's at Cherry Lawn.
I'm sorry, Cherry Lawn. I'm sorry. Did I say Weed Beach Cherry Lawn? Leaving the three courts at Cherry Lawn. And this has been asked for, for a number of years, supported by the Commission. I think it's time and hopefully it could be financed in a way to make it palatable for the taxpayers, but I do think it's time for these courts to be redone.
Sarah?
I had on my list to add that in for next year for the 250,000 for Cherry Lawn. I'd be willing to have that conversation also. I think it's important. They have been asking and I don't think they're in good shape. Maybe that's a field trip item?
Yeah. I guess the one, one question that I would offer, and I'm happy to entertain that, is in, in the context of the work of the Parks and Rec Commission and Department, do they have the ability to undertake that project in the coming fiscal year if we decide to fund it?
It would be outsourced, um, and it would be bid out. So it'd be the management we're talking about. I think, you know, it depends on what else may come up. And we would have to give guidance to the director that this needs to happen. We're putting the money into it and have that be a focus.
Okay. And do we have any context as to why the Commission didn't propose it for this year?
They did. I cut it. They did. I, they asked for this year and I cut it and pushed it out.
Forward. I see. Okay. We can entertain that. The other question I had on Parks and Rec Capital is the Tilly Pond dredging. I think it's a great and necessary project. I just didn't know if there was a time that we need to bake in for permitting? And if the project could all happen again within the course of the next fiscal year?
Um, I reached out to Pam and she said, yes, it can happen if they get on applying for the permits as soon as they bid out the project. I don't know how tight of a schedule that is.
Okay.
And she is going to get back to me with how, if you wanted to split the funding, give her enough this year to do the permitting and do the actual work in the following fiscal year. She's going to get back to me with the number of what that, what that would cost, what the split would be.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm a little bit torn about the, uh, the other mower. Does it certainly sounds good that the crew would be more efficient? But I'm not aware that we actually measure the efficiency in terms of knowing how many hours are spent on mowing currently, how many man-hours are spent per park, any other metric to evaluate whether or not spending the, the, the 27,000, is it, uh, dollars will actually result in more production out of the crew because they free up time to do additional things.
If I recall the conversation, this actually will enable a second crew to mow the lawn. So I think that our lawn mowing will definitely get done quicker, having two crews out mowing than one. So I actually strongly support this investment.
Right. And part of it wasn't, it wasn't just about making them more efficient. It's about the turnaround time to get the fields ready. That when, you know, when they come into work, if they have, all the fields need to be done. They don't have time to get them all mowed in operational, by the time the activities start. So by being able to have two crews, they get the mowing all done and then they go to the other activities. So it's not really changing how much time they spend mowing. It's just the fact that they can have two crews mowing at the same time. So they get the mowing all done at the start of the day. Then they go on to their, their other stuff instead of mowing through the day and then doing the other stuff later.
It may have been the conversation on the blower though, Dave, because we.
The blower, yeah. The blower was the time saver.
Yeah, maybe that was the apparatus that was more of a time saver issue, which had been the 16,000. Yeah.
It was 12. Yeah. The blower was the one that was going to make them, it would take them less time to do the blowing period. The mowing doesn't reduce, like, if we need four hours to do all the mowing, we're still gonna need four hours or four man-hours, right? It's just that we can get all those four man-hours done at the same time.
We can, David, if you want to keep it on our potential cut list, we can do that and then we can vote on that.
No, um, no, I was just, it's something I struggle with because, you know, when we spend money on a capital project like this, I'd like to know that the efficiency that's created is going to result in us getting something else done that we wouldn't have otherwise done. But we don't typically measure those things. So I don't know how to balance that out.
So David, I think what you're getting at with the measuring the man-hours, it's really, you know, I think it is important for us to try and get that done. I don't think it makes a difference in this one instance. It's, what it actually gets us is better service to the public by being able to get all the ball fields done and ready earlier in the day so that the public can get more use out of them and then the crew turns to other work.
Okay. That's good. Yep.
Yeah, two things. Several years ago, I went through this study of greens mowers and turf mowers on a golf course. And what's happened to the whole mowing industry is the technology has really changed. And when you buy a new mower, you're getting, you're, you're getting inherently a more efficient, better cutting machine, provided it's sharpened every day, which is what you do. Every day you sharpen these, these machines. Number two, I always wondered why the town bought these mowers. When I went through a whole cycle, a cycle of study of this and we lease all of our mowers because we figured without, after three to five years, the technology's changed again and we're going to get a better product. I don't know why they haven't looked at that issue. Maybe they have. I brought this up a number of years ago in a budget discussion. But you're getting a better tech, you're getting a better product today than you would, than you have now, which is going to make you a better, it's gonna be more efficient inherently or do a better job of cutting. And so I'm in favor of, of having the machinery. The question is, do they want to lease it or do they want to buy it? But that's not to be answered today. For example, at a club that I'm involved with, we lease all of the mowers. Because as I said, within three to five years, the technology has changed. We do not lease backhoes, things that have a long life. Anyway, that's the point of view.
That is a great point, Kip. Thank you. Yeah.
Good point. Well, add it in, uh, new policies to discuss.
Okay.
Sarah?
It's an interesting point, Kip, especially, I mean, I support the 27,000. My curiosity has piqued when the following year is at 75,000 for another one. And that, I wonder, you know, what would the lease change as far as the spend? There it is, Kate.
I will.
Large farm.
Yeah.
For Highland Farm.
I will, um, ask Pam to do some research into, you know, seeing some peers, um, if any of them lease it, lease their mowers. And then we can do an evaluation to see if there's savings to be had for the town.
I would totally support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Historical perspective, Highland Farm used to be cut with a tractor and a gang mower, and the gang mower had, if I recall, it had nine reels behind it to cut that field. So it was a huge, huge gang, was a huge gang mower at that time. Maybe that's what they're talking about here, large mower.
Not sure.
Or mine.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything here, Kate.
There is nothing there. Okay. Police. There's a lot here. So we have a vehicle replacement. Remark patrol vehicles, one administrator vehicle. We have the crowd control equipment. If you recall, the chief talked about, um, while we haven't had the need for it here, we have, uh, we are obligated to send our officers to other communities to assist, and this would provide, um, equipment for half the force, um, to be protected and with typical crowd control, um, equipment. We have two AED replacements, remembering that the police officers are first responders.
Medical first responders.
Medical first responders, yes. Replacement of three mobile data, data terminals. And if you recall, these are not going to be the, um, what we had, we've had currently, where they're basically built into the cars. These will be, um, devices that they can actually take with them while on the call, out of the car, doing reports, taking pictures as needed. Um, so this is not just a replacement, but it's an upgrade in type of, um, equipment we're, we're using. And the in-house video recording system, this is something, you know, we need to have. Um, by law, we need to be recording the, um, interviews. Um, it does tie into the system that are, we use for the body cameras and the vehicle cameras. And that's the last item they have. We have questions on any of those?
No, I fully support all of those.
I just have a, a tech question. With, um, so many iPads and mobile data terminals, um, is it more efficient to purchase these things? Back to the question about leasing, is there any opportunity for acquiring these in a different manner? I don't know what happens to them when, when they outlive their useful life, if there's a, a trade-in value, or if they just, you know, what, what happens to them? They're expensive pieces of equipment, and, um, just like to know a little bit more.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if there's some kind of like a subscription program where you could pay a certain amount of money every year, and you get the, um, when they come out with a new version, you get it.
Yep.
I'll talk to the chief. Anything else here?
No, they all seem essential.
Yep. All right, we're going to go to Public Works, I think will be next. Last but not least. So we have funding for the equipment reserve. I can open that spreadsheet up later. Replacement of two vehicles, as I described, one of them is going to have, I forget what he called it, but you can, um, change out parts on it. Um, pavement rehab at the town hall, this is the lower front lot by the Mather Center. Sidewalk rehab, paving townwide, those are the two big numbers. Uh, the second phase of upgrading the windows in the gymnasium and the exterior doors from town hall to the gymnasium, and then, um, $5,000 for landscaping at the entrance to the Mather, the lower, um, parking lot.
Sarah?
Kate, does the asterisk sidewalk rehab imply that that's an item that gets bonded? I can't remember.
No. Um, in, we had used bond funds to pay for some of these things in the past, and that's what the, um, that's what the single asterisk means. The other means last year, we paid $400,000 of that cost out of, um, a transfer from the reserve contingency.
So, um, I don't have a, a good memory on the sidewalk rehab, how much, if any, of that is concrete.
Um, oh, yeah, that was the difference. Yeah, I got it.
It is in my mind, anyway, because the other is asphalt, and it, I know, um, I don't think it's a good policy, according to our financial experts, to bond for asphalt.
Um, I don't think it tells us here.
No, but it does say 30-year life. It sounds like concrete, however.
I thought, I thought its preference was to do concrete wherever possible.
Hmm, can we get a clarification on how much of the 750 is considered concrete? And then would you guys support us making a recommendation for bonding?
Yes, this is the new stuff.
Alternate, okay.
Okay. Anything else specifically you want to look at there?
No.
Anybody else?
Just on that document and just the spreadsheet in general, this was a budget discussion, but just to get a better sense, there's ones, twos, and threes. We've got a couple of, but not-
What they mean?
No, 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 no. Um, okay, I'm sorry. So the priority he's only giving is for this year's 21, I mean, this budget cycles?
Yes.
Okay, not going forward. All right, I've been used to seeing Board of Ed looks at those numbers, um, also further out, but that's fine.
Okay, is there anything else you want to look at in Public Works Capital? This is the last capital.
I don't think so. No. Do we have sewer or parking capital? I do want to talk about something with parking.
Right, let me give you a second. Parking capital.
Oh.
At the sidewalk at the Norton Heights Station.
So, um, we have the, let's see, this is, oh, yeah, this is what it is. It's the, um, an enclosed snow blower to remove the snow at the stations. That's the $84,000. Um, you had, we, at a previous meeting, we did talk about the possibility of adding $100,000 for, um, the enclosures-
Yes.
At the Darien Station?
Yes. I, I would like to do that, you know, to be honest, at this point, it's, it's a, it's a, an estimate. We don't have, um, more firm numbers, but Connecticut DOT is moving forward with the design integrating four shelters on the new platforms at the Darien train station that the town of Darien would procure, and they would install. So I'd like to ask for your consideration to add $100,000 in anticipation of an expenditure to participate in that project out of parking capital. You go with that, David? Thank you. Okay. Sarah, Kip, Kip, do you have a question?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, great. And you're good, Sarah? Okay, Krista?
Um, yeah, I don't have a fine with that ad.
Okay.
I mean, I guess we're going to vote on the whole thing at another point, but absolutely, I would support that. I had it on my list.
Thank you. Great. Perfect. Okay.
Okay, sewer capital was, I believe, just pumps. Let's- Wrong file. So, uh, root control, pump replacement, and jet and TV the sewer lines. These are all, um, the chemical root control and jet and TV the sewer lines. That's to keep the lines, um, clear. And then we've been going through the process of replacing pumps and upgrading them to make the system run more efficiently.
No questions?
Nope.
All good.
Um, I ha, I have one other, uh, potential ad for, I guess it's for Public Works. We're beginning our discussions about the utilization of, or what we want to do with the Edgerton property. And while we won't have a decision, um, in the near term, I'd like to ask for your consideration to add $75,000 for some tree removal, some grading, and some planting of grass, and removing a piece of asphalt up there to, to ready that property for, um, either doing nothing more than that, or, um, some other future potential use. We just want to get a, you know, get some kind of a, of a budget number in there, unless you all believe that we should just wait and do that as a special appropriation. We got an estimate from Ed that doing the, the general work that I described would be roughly $75,000.
Jamie, what is the usable for the seeding or the grass? What would be the usable area, then? Do you have that number?
I don't have that number. Several acres of land.
Okay. Leveled?
Yes, you know, to the, to the best of our ability, you know, certainly more level than it is today. Right now, it's not really usable. A lot of people are walking their dogs up there. Um, and, uh, um, uh, Mr. Fiverson and I had a conversation, and he's willing to be our neighbor intermediary as our discussions progress on the utilization of that property. So, um, you know, maybe I'm looking for a little advice from Kate and Jen here to, you know, should we be looking to add some money to the budget, or do you think we should wait and do that at a later date?
Um, I, budget's high.
Okay.
Um, but I also think, you know, it would be something good for that, for that neighborhood to, um, improve the, that property a little bit. Um, and I think you've, you're going to give the Board of Finance some direction, um, that can help modify the impact on the taxpayers. Um,
Can we, can we put it on the potential ad list and then, you know, revisit in a future discussion? I'll get you guys.
List, um, and my philosophy on things like this is if you have a project that you want to do, and it's far enough along that you actually have an estimate, it should go in the annual budget to be evaluated against all of the other projects, and, um, not go the special appropriation route if you know about it now.
Okay.
I agree with Jen. Whenever we can avoid the special appropriation route, I think we should.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sarah, should it go in capital or operating?
It would go in capital.
Okay, so we'll stick it in our potential ad list, and no final decision to be made on that yet. We can think about it. I'll send you the information I got from Ed, and we'll vote on that at a future meeting.
I think that would be a great spot also to take a look at. I certainly would like to drive back there again and see.
Yep.
You know, and to help get ideas, um, with our future discussion, whether it's in the near term or long term, is anybody looking for that space? I know, Jamie, you reached out to the school district. Um, if we can incorporate that at all into our discussions, that is hopeful.
Yep, perfect. We'll add that to the field trip list.
Okay, you ready for the general fund?
Yes.
Um, all right, did we have anything you wanted to go on into on the assessor?
No.
Okay. Board of Selectmen? I'll open that. This is where we have some of our, um, proposed, um, improvements to services. The, um, adding a part-time public information officer, and the, the studies we would like to engage in, in the grant consultant.
Didn't, didn't we talk about the possibility that it might be early for the wayfinding portion?
Yes.
Downtown?
Yep.
Correct.
So that's a, that's an item that we might want to, uh, consider taking out for this year, knowing that it'll, it'll be back next year.
And we also had a question about the, uh, grant consultant. There are different ways to procure that service, as Kate had mentioned to us, either by contract, a dollar amount, or a percentage of the grant. Um, I don't, I don't really have, I don't know how to evaluate which would be better. Um, but I, in concept, support the idea of getting some help to find and write grants. And of course, the, the emergency services review, I strongly support. And then if anybody wants to talk about the, the PIO, I think it's great, and I'd love to continue the conversations with the Board of Education about shared service. Any other comments?
I support all of that, Jamie.
These are expand, expansions of, of town service, so important to focus on these and weigh in now.
I completely support everything that has been said, whether the grant to put aside for next year, the wayfinder, and the support of the public information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
Um, building department, anything we wanted to go back to there?
No, not for me.
For me was on the revenue side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just wondering, can we bring that up? That was going to be an ad, obviously, to revenue.
Right, that's, you know, I, Pete did, I reached out to Pete. Um, he was reluctant. He was reluctant to increase his revenue estimate. I will go back and look at a couple other things, as David mentioned, the pool, see if that has any kind of an impact. So I will touch base with him in the morning.
Could you bring it up there on Open Gov? I've got something else, just on the revenue side. I'm sorry, I didn't have a number associated with my ad, but, um, yeah, I just thought we could. Bring it up for discussion.
I will, um, I will raise it again with, with Pete in the morning and, um, get back to you.
Okay. It's a, it's a substantial increase over, um, over historical, so I can see Pete's reluctance in, in adding more to the revenue estimate.
And it is one of those areas where if we miss our target, it can be very painful.
Okay, that's a good, no, that is a good point when you're looking at revenue.
Yeah. Okay. Community and environment, this is beautification, celebrations, community grants.
Let me look at the, the community grants for a second.
Fair thing.
I have an add there on the holiday lights.
Okay.
What's your recommendation, Krista?
Um, that, according to the commentary, that the budget, but as I understand it from the comments, the budget here is 7,000. We're supporting five, and the rest coming from the chambers budget. I would support an add of 1,000 to 2,000 to defray, help defray the financial burden on our chamber members. And I think the town benefits enjoys those lights, and I would support, supporting that to a greater financial degree.
So, I was gonna open up the discussion. While the chamber has not asked for an outright grant for chamber activities, the town of Darien doesn't have an economic development department, like most municipalities. And we lean heavily on the Darien Chamber of Commerce for that work. So clear this past year with COVID and their interactions with the Small Business Association and helping all of our small businesses. So, um, I, I would be more inclined to consider, um, offering, uh, a grant, a general, uh, operating grant to the Darien Chamber of Commerce, you know, in recognition of their partnership with the town of Darien on behalf of our small businesses, not have it dedicated to the, the holiday lights, per se.
I would support that also. I just didn't, I, I was troubled thinking that that two grand was coming out of their budget. No, I would support a grant. I'd like to understand where they would use the money, but I certainly support, supporting, support, supporting them.
I know. Sarah?
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea philosophically as well. I'd be curious if you have a, a number in mind, or if that's a to-be-discussed thing.
You know, I think it's for, for, really for all of us to discuss. Again, we don't give a lot of community grants, so I think, you know, I was gonna ballpark at $1,000 from the town for a general grant for this year. But I know it's new, and I'm, I'm just sharing it with you tonight, so I do want all of your input on it. Sarah?
My only concern about kind of not earmarking the fund for the lights, I do know many of our residents love the lights. I love the lights. If we do not kind of support that particular idea and make a general grant instead, does that leave the kind of decision about the lights up to the Chamber of Commerce?
Why don't I call, um, Chamber and have a, a brief conversation?
Well, they've, they've asked, we have the 5,000 for the lights already.
Yep.
So, or perhaps we give 1,000 or 2,000 for the lights and then invite them to apply for the grant for next year. Either way, the, the lights money would be coming out of their budget. So it's just another.
I'm okay to continue supporting the lights to some level. Kate, can you go back to the? They do get donations for the lights, too, from others than the town.
Right, and they did say that their cost for the lights went down.
So typically, we gave 8,000, right?
Right.
And there was a request for seven?
Their request was for five.
Oh, okay.
And the bills was coming from their funds.
Okay.
Right, but they, in their, in the request, they said that their costs, they bid it out, and that their cost had gone down. And that was the reason for the request at five.
If they requested five, I, I would be inclined to leave that at five and consider some extra money for the, a general grant with an eye on how important small businesses for the town.
Okay, um, I, that's how, what I'm inclined as well. So I'll follow up and have a conversation tomorrow with them about that and, uh, get a better picture on their utilization of funds, so we know what we're giving to if we wanna consider doing that.
And I'd like to understand then where the added 2,000 would come from? If they expect, or they have pledges of private donations for the two? I agree that we don't need to be earmarking money in that respect.
Krista, every year, they send out a solicitation for donations for the lights. So I, I'm assuming that it comes from there.
Okay, if they feel like they're gonna get the 2,000 from that, then I would support a grant.
Okay, um, we should probably have a conversation about the Historical Society grant. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that? Remembering historically that we, we never used to give to the Historical Society, but then we, uh, we were requested to do so. It's not shown on this history here, but in support of the fact that they are housing in an appropriately controlled environment, historical documents for the town of Darien. And, you know, our history is very valuable, so, um, if, if you all are, are okay to continue to support this at this level, um, that's fine. It's, it's quite a bit more than we give to other, other things. Sarah?
One of the things that we talked about last year with them is, well, in general with our grantees, how they've used the funds, a report about what they've used the previous year's funds for. I, I believe last year's grant was fairly specific. This one is more for, it sounds like more operating expenses. Is that? Is that accurate?
Um, only, only in what I said. It's really to help offset operating expenses for the, uh, the storage of historic documents. It's right there in the write-up.
Right, right.
Yeah. So no, no other additional comments here?
I have no issue with the request.
Okay. I see nothing else, okay?
All right. And, and then on the depots grant? They come, thank you for getting the supporting documentation. Have they indicated how they would use the funds? I couldn't quite find that. I, I know it's unchanged from last year, but just trying to better understand.
So increasing awareness surrounding mental health and normalizing it for middle and high school students. And they also provide adult education on the topic.
Very worthwhile, I would say, in this environment.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have questions or concerns about that, Krista?
Um, I'm just trying to better, a little bit more granular to understand what, I think that's the mission in general, in many ways, of the depot, which is wonderful and, and invaluable service to the community. But is this a specific program they're looking to bring in, or?
We can follow up with Janice to see if there's specific programming that they're planning to offer. Anything else?
Darien Fire?
No, I think that we, um, you know, we may have some things to talk about next year.
Okay. That service is really, nothing you can do about that. Emergency Management Department? We did have a question, um, that I've not been able to get an answer to regarding, the COVID supplies that are included in this budget versus the COVID-related supplies in the New York Heights budget. They're not, the descriptions are not exactly the same. Uh, but I do have a question out to the Emergency Management Director on that item to see if there is an overlap and if there's room for some reduction.
Um, yeah, that was certainly my question, and just to broaden it as to, I, I know the schools are looking into this also. To what extent, you know, is the town spending for COVID? Are our peer communities budgeting for COVID-related expenses? Is that something we could look for an appropriation when and if that, all of a sudden, we have a spike again? I, I wanted to look at that a little bit more holistically, but you've captured most, I think, all the departments in which they budgeted, but, um, I was wondering if we could look at some cuts there.
Kate and Jen, you put together a report on that today. Is that something you can share?
Yeah, hang on. Let me see if I can make this bigger. So, um, I don't believe we can cut the testing. Legal, we might be able to.
Will we still be testing? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kate, I may judge you, but just on that first.
I don't think we can cut testing for workplace exposure.
Nope.
Is that a recommendation of David, or?
I think it's a responsible thing to do as an employer. If we have an employee who has been exposed in the workplace, it's our obligation to get them tested. Supplies that, you know, the masks, the gloves, hand sanitizer, all the PPE cleaning supplies, you know, those things, particularly the cleaning supplies. We've increased the volume that we've purchased for because of COVID. It's not things that are going to go to waste. Youth services, um, you know, if we want to continue running a summer camp, there are going to be costs to running the summer camp in a COVID environment. Different types of activities, this, all the cleaning supplies for that.
I'm sorry, is that summer of '22?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And how much COVID are we budgeting for then?
We're estimating, looks like 15, $25,000 in additional expenses, and then actually revenue losses as well. Uh, these are reductions in expenses because we can't do certain things with COVID. And we are estimating that we'll lose about $100,000 in revenue there.
So, and just to clarify, this is camps that begin July 1st and, or will run the summer of 2021, but then also the tail end of June 2022.
So it's possible that some of these expenses will not be incurred, depending on the COVID situation, for the fourth quarter of the next fiscal year.
Right.
But, but I think it's.
Summer.
It's prudent to assume that we will have to continue safety measures for this coming summer camp cycle.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to clarify, for the budgeting for summer camps. You do, it's broken down into two fiscal years, given the fact that the fiscal year falls in the middle of the summer. So we're, we're budgeting somewhat for summer of '22, but the majority of this is summer '21. Which I would, yeah, no, that I would support.
Okay.
Okay, um, going back where we were, EMS, any questions there? If you recall, we had significant increases here related to the contract with Stanford and the revenue offsets.
You added the overtime?
That's in the emergency management. Yes, we have that. That's on our known adjustments.
Got it, okay.
Um, Finance Department?
Nope.
Okay, Fire Commission?
Nope.
I'm sorry, mine, I wrote mine in order of. You did the operating supplies, you cut that?
Or?
1,500 operating, Fire Commission?
That's on the known adjustments.
Okay, and the lawn cutting facility repair?
We don't know the answer to that yet.
Answer on that yet? Sorry, again, I have my notes in a separate place. Okay, to be determined. Thank you.
Okay, um, Fire Marshal?
Nope.
General overhead? David, I think you had had a question. Yeah. It was contingency?
That's the one where the contingency finances for the Board of Finance, is that right?
Right.
I'd like to recommend that we, yeah, I'd like to recommend that we make a, um, $150,000 cut to the Board of Finance contingency based on historic use. And Jen, maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
So historically, we've budgeted 400,000. Um, we've used more in, uh, prior years, fiscal 2016, 207,000, and it's come down from there. Fiscal 2020 is a little bit of an outlier, we know, because a lot of things didn't happen because of COVID. Uh, year-to-date, we're at 70,000, so, um, if we brought it down to 250, that would certainly be sufficient to cover the type of activity we've seen for the last four to five years.
Does anyone have concerns about that?
No, at, at the 250 level, it actually still looks like it would be, you know, above. above what we've seen in the last four to five years, but you know, some cut is good, so I could be on board with the one fifty.
Plus, we know the Board of Finance can disagree with our action.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to recommend. Anybody else have any concerns about that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Human Resources?
Nope.
Okay, Human Services? IT? Sarah, did you have something?
I just don't know if we, I know we have not sat down, we haven't had that conversation about how to take the findings from the study and put it into play. I just don't know if we don't want to put some kind of marker in the budget to do any of the projects if we decide some of them are high priority, given that this will, this budget will take us through June of 2022. And, you know, if we want to look at having any purchases, maybe as a special appropriation, I don't know, or under the Board of Finance contingency, but I'm excited about putting into play some of the directives that they put forward, so.
Right, so at your meeting next week, if you remember, we had talked about you should discuss a mission statement for the IT Steering Committee and the makeup of that committee. And I think if you want to really follow what came out of the tech assessment recommendation for the IT Steering Committee, we should put that in place before putting any money aside because they should be guiding us where to go.
I certainly don't want a lack of budget appropriation here to hold us back from the work of that steering committee. So, you know, we don't really have anything defined now, but I would hope that the Board of Finance would support initiatives that the Steering Committee would recommend to us.
Legal Counsel?
The only thing that I saw there was the thirty thousand for the COVID-related stuff. I don't recall the number that we spent in the prior year, but it seems like for the coming year, beginning August of 21 into 22, a lot more people will have been vaccinated. Hopefully, things will be, continue to be on the mend at that point. I didn't know if there was some room to, to reduce that number, so.
I have that also as an item for discussion. And to cut as opposed to augment.
Yeah, I don't, you know, of course, never say never, but our legal costs were really for help with guidance on the executive orders. And I don't see more executive orders coming that would require legal interpretation. So maybe we could just have a, a follow-up conversation with Town Council about this, but I think it could possibly take a cut here too.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of what I have been thinking as well, Jamie.
Okay.
I'd agree.
All righty, the Road and Fire Department?
Nope.
Rhode Heights?
Nope.
Parks and Recreation?
I'd like to have another discussion regarding the patrol monitor. And you put in the printing day passes, correct?
We took it out.
I mean, took it out, correct?
Yes.
Adjusted, I should say, is a better way. I just like another conversation regarding that patrol monitor. I'm sort of struggling with that need.
It got some amazing feedback last summer. I think people were very, very, very happy with it and happy with the service that it provided to the town. I can just add that.
I absolutely supported it at the time, given the challenges we're having with capacity, travel. Or, because this is, I want to get my months right, as again, we're bifurcating the summer. This is all for summer, so some of, some of 21 and 22 are all 21. No, you got 22 here.
It's the summer of 21, so May of 21. No, July of 21, August of 21, then May and June of 22. So for operating, if we're still in a COVID environment this summer, there may be some need for something like this if we close the beaches down the way we did last summer.
Yeah, I, I am not in, personally not sure to be budgeting for this service for the summer of 2022. I think it's a nice to have, I do. I think it's a nice to have, but I struggle that we're not Jones Beach, that in a normal operating environment, do we need this service? Can we do without it? Particularly summer of 22 and arguably summer of 21, but I will leave that to discussion.
So, you know, it's clear that this idea of a patrolling monitor was born out of our need for assistance during COVID, but it proved to be valuable in having some town eyes on our parks, which we don't have, and many other communities do have. They have, you know, park patrols that, you know, drive around, and we just don't have that for, you know, places like Maguaan and Baker and Cherry Lawn Park. I feel like we have decent coverage at the beaches during the summer with the lifeguards and, and whatnot, but we, we have literally no staff, particularly in the, in the early evenings and on the weekends that are monitoring our parks. And, you know, it's a good discussion for us to have. I, you know, I, we could certainly follow up with the Parks Commission to get their color on the importance of this, and yes, it is a new level of service for the town of Darien, but given how important our parks are to our community, I'm okay supporting this going forward. You know, and giving it a try. It's certainly something that we could eliminate in future years if, if we reevaluate. But I, you know, I was, I got all the messages every day this past summer from the park monitors along with Pam, and it was really quite valuable. So, happy to keep it on the potential cut list, Krista, though, for us to, you know, have a final deliberation about that, and I'll reach out to Lori Bora to get some more color.
Okay, that'd be fair enough that does, is there a way in which the staff who, granted, they're focused when they're doing maintenance, could they take on that role since they are there for that reason?
There's no one doing maintenance on the weekends and in the evening.
For just the weekends for, like, woodland. I don't know, is this for forty-two thousand? I just.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I'd rather give them the snow blower or the leaf blower, but I just, okay. Well, it's not something we're going to resolve tonight.
Continuing for one more year to see how it works out. Sounds like a good program.
Thank you.
Anything else on Parks and Recreation?
Kate, on the revenue side, how comfortable was Pam with the beach and court building rental? Because I think what it looks like to me is she went all the way back to the last normal year of 2019 and used that number, but year-to-date is really low. I guess there's some seasonality to it, but the prior year, which is also affected by COVID, was about half of a normal year, so.
Specifically, which one are we talking about?
It's the parking rack, beach and court building rental line item. So beach and court facilities.
It's that last line item in front of you.
Oh, the building rent, okay.
Yeah, because see, it goes back to 2019 basically level.
Right. I, you know, that looking.
Like you cut it some anyway, so I just don't, yeah.
That was her proposal. I think she's looking for a normally, a normal paddle court season. So remember the paddle season during the summer, it's not paddle and we can rent it out to other people. I think Pam is assuming that we will get back to normal activity later in this calendar year. So for the fiscal year, we should be looking more like a normal, you know, going back to the 10th, the 19 year, we should be looking more like that.
Okay, yeah, fair, fair enough, because I wasn't going to cut it that much anyway, so it wouldn't be that big of a number to have, you know, a dramatic impact.
Yeah, this is one that, you know, if we don't hit this target, it's, it's not substantial.
Yeah, got it. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Let's just leave it then.
Okay. Anything else on Parks and Recreation?
No.
Okay. Planning and zoning?
I had nothing.
No.
Hang on a second. Let me get rid of my McAfee notice.
I thought that was on my computer. I was trying to click it.
Okay. Okay, Police?
Yeah, so let's talk about civilian dispatch. I'm willing to go ahead and.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
No, no, go, go ahead, Jamie, you're fine.
This has been over a 10-year request to the Board of Selectmen. It's been a little bit painful, the process of getting to where we are, but I am willing to support the final phase of the civilian dispatch. I'm not entirely convinced that this won't be a consolidated regional service in short order by mandate of the state. But I think that the Police Commission has, and the Chief have provided us with documentation on the overall benefits to service that would come with finishing this plan, so I'm willing to support it this year. It seemed, it seems silly to sort of leave, leave the project unfinished, if you will, and not, and not, not see if we're reaping the full benefits of fully civilianizing our dispatch. David?
Yeah, I would say, listen, I would say I'm generally with you. The letter that we got from Kim and the Chief raised some incremental concerns with me that, you know, they have said all along, three per, the, three per shift is the right number and we'll be able to staff two and, and at all times, and they're having trouble doing that currently. So I'm not sure that we aren't going to, you know, still have some problems with that next year. And I'm not sure how they're going to resolve that, but, you know, it seems like it's probably time to, to give them a full compliment and, you know, try to hold them, hold them accountable to, to get it done.
You know, understand that one of the reasons why they had some trouble staffing two at all times on both day and evening shifts was due to the fact we did not have three dispatchers assigned to each shift. We were short one for quite a while.
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
I supported it last year. I will continue to support it this year.
Thank you. Sarah, thoughts?
I support it. I love the idea of getting some data and metrics. Of course, I want to make sure all of our shifts are staffed. I support the idea. We've had this in motion for a while.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else to discuss in the Police Department?
I didn't have any other questions flagged. It's a big department. Anybody have any other questions or comments? No, okay.
Okay. Probate?
Nope.
Health Department? Library?
No, I just want to thank the library again for a constrained and thoughtful budget.
I appreciate the analysis that was done by the Board and Kira this year. Thank them very much for the changes they've implemented in their operations. The only item I have for discussion is a possible cut of the six thousand or modification to that for their COVID expenses to better understand, is that an expense that they need to take them through July 1st, 2022?
Anything else there? Public Works?
No, not for me.
Registars? That's both the voter registry and elections.
Just the lunches, but you already addressed it.
Yep.
Thank you. Senior Center?
I have an item for discussion and a possible cut on the, sorry, facility maintenance materials. I'm sorry, just looking at that line item as they've utilized it throughout COVID, I guess, since, you know, March through the end of the year into, I just am struggling with the nine thousand need through, again, the end of this fiscal year, the fiscal year we're discussing.
So the maintenance supplies cricket COVID, what exactly is that, Kate?
Cleaning supplies.
Cleaning supplies. So this is four thousand dollars of additional cleaning supplies over and above our typical facility cleaning supplies?
It was difficult, the way this budget was put together, to understand, we have a three thousand dollar increase. These are normal items in here, but I believe basically both of them are going up because, or higher than normal because of COVID. When Jen and I took a look at it today, we made some assumptions on how much of each was COVID-related and where we could make some reductions because bringing back the food program in-house, some of the Eastern bag supplies would not be needed.
Yeah, when do we, when do we anticipate stopping the drive-through lunches?
Well, I'd rather look at when do we anticipate. Well, I'd rather look at when do we anticipate having in-person lunches, again.
Well...
September or October.
So I, I think that that question needs to be asked of Beth, that it, the, it is the intention to continue a drive-through lunch program until the seniors can be back in person? That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
So that's only, that's just a couple months of, of drive-through lunches in theory, right, in this fiscal year? There's a, there's a time period when the center typically is closed. I don't know if that still stands for this coming August.
Um, it's only a week.
July, August, and, and you know, who knows when they can really be back open, but I, I would fully anticipate that the seniors will be vaccinated, certainly by September, and should be able to be back in person, so are these expenses representative of, of two months is essentially what I think we might need. Two months at the most. Sarah?
So, just, you know, when we went through the known adjustments earlier, we did flag this. I think we might have, I might have referred to it as food program, but it is the facility maintenance materials that we'd be cutting $1,300. We recommend that we can cut $1,300 out of there. That was looking at the increase of $3,000 and assuming that the bulk of that would not be needed. Or I shouldn't say the bulk of it, the bulk of it as related to the food program would not be needed.
I guess maybe what's throwing me a little bit is that the paper bags, shouldn't they be under food and related supplies, not under facilities maintenance materials?
Yeah, could be.
Yeah, I would just like if we could just have another conversation with them, or have them, you know, just to better understand if this is a program specific as far as these lunches go, if they're running it for two or three months.
I will have that conversation with Beth.
$9,000 is really the right number? How are, how have they spent it so far year-to-date? Because I would be looking at, you know, $1,500 cut, you know, getting them closer back to six.
On top of the $1,300 we've already cut?
Yes, I was looking at, you know, even splitting the difference at a $1,500 minimum.
But you're looking to cut a total of $3,800?
No, 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 I'm sorry, not in addition. I was looking at a $1,500, $2,000 cut. But more importantly, better understand why they need the $9,000 related to COVID to go.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
And then does that, I would also add to that next line, the food and related supplies, is that still the right number, a 12% increase? Was this related to delivering the food in the to-go manner?
All right, got it. I will talk to Beth in the morning and get you the further details on that. Was there anything else in the senior center?
No.
Okay.
Sarah, did you have a comment?
No, I just, I don't, we have no idea how this is going to go this year, and I don't think it's an enormous amount of money. And I think worst case, if there's leftover funds, we, you know, we have it back. You know, serving our seniors is important. I just want to make sure that they have it if they, they need it.
Yep.
I completely support the concept. I just want to make sure that they're looking at it in the, the timeframe in which we think is reasonable, but absolutely, no, I completely support our seniors. I would reiterate, I would like to have a discussion as to their revenue line. Perhaps it's not appropriate for this budget, but again, to better understand their revenue operations.
Yeah, I would like to have that discussion once we're done with the budget and, and talk about a non-resident membership fee, moving that forward.
Whether it is a membership fee, whether it is a surcharge of a nominal amount to non-residents. Couple of different ways to achieve the same goal.
Okay, senior transportation? Tax collector? Town administrator? Town clerk?
I'm sorry, back on town administrator. I apologize. The revenue parking? We talked about...
We talked about that at the start of the meeting?
And what number did you put in?
$14,000.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Town clerk? Transfers out, this is really, these are plug numbers. So, and then youth services?
Nope, all good.
Okay. Do we want to review the other operating funds, sewer and parking at all?
I had nothing in those items.
Yeah, I didn't either.
All right.
We're good.
So then we will, we've got a number of questions to get answered for you tomorrow.
Yep.
Jen has been keeping track of all the suggested cuts and we'll work up numbers showing you where you stand tomorrow, and you can have a lively debate.
That's great. I have on our field trip list, and of course, we can't really do this without having a meeting. So the only one that I'm not sure how we can get access to is the fire training center, the concrete pad, but you know, we'll talk about it tomorrow and see how we can go see the concrete pad, the cherry lawn tennis courts. You can do that anytime, actually. And the Edgerton property. So those were the three places that we wanted to go take a look.
Jamie, I'm sure Bobby could get you into the drill tower.
Okay.
Or Brian Francis would as well.
It's just whether we do it all together or not. If we do it together, it's a meeting. But we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, for Edgerton and Cherry Lawn, if you just want to give us a date by which to visit them, I'm happy to go independently.
Sure. Okay.
Well, you're scheduled to have a vote on your budget on Monday.
Okay, I'll get it done before then.
The question, I think, for the is, I don't know, that the fire tower is plowed right now. Yes, no? I mean, it may not have been...
Yeah, I don't know that.
We'll find out.
Yeah, find that out.
Then can we get a copy of the COVID breakdown, that document you shared?
Yes.
Yep.
And the other spreadsheet, and then Jen, a synopsis of what, where our line items are right now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Kate and Jen, thank you.
Anything else for this evening?
Nope.
Okay, if not, a reminder that we are back here to continue deliberations tomorrow evening. We have also added a public hearing for tomorrow evening. So we will open our meeting with the public hearing. And then we can deliberate on what, if anything, we hear. We will hopefully have answers to many of the questions posed this evening, continue our deliberations. And hopefully, we can do that in maybe less than two and a half hours. That would be awesome. But, good meeting. I thought we, again, very thoughtful comments. As always, Finance and Budget Committee and Board of Finance members, if you have any questions or concerns for us that you'd like us to consider in our deliberations, send them our way. We'll be sure to do so. And I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy of the memo that Jack sent. I'm not sure if you guys got it or not. If you did, I'll make sure you get it tomorrow. Okay, anything else for tonight? All right, thanks, everybody.
Great, thank you all.
See you tomorrow.
Thanks, Kate, thanks, Jen.